Call this regular meeting at work, call roll.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Fabia.
Here.
Newman.
Here. Please stand and join us in the budget meeting.
One of the conditions to comply of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands one nation under God and indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start tonight with a presentation from Ivan Baker. He is the Regional Economic Development Update. He is the President and CEO of the North Central Illinois Economic Development Group. Ivan, come on up and...
Thank you, Mayor.
Just mention your name and away you go.
You can walk around that mic if you wish.
Okay.
Just make sure it's on.
Just make sure it's on.
It's on.
It's on. Again, good evening. I'm Ivan Baker, President of the North Central Illinois Economic Development Corporation, and certainly on behalf of all the investors and our board of directors, thank you to you, the Princeton leaders, who are committed to economic development and growth and economic prosperity in our entire region. We appreciate it very much, and we know that we've got a lot to do, and we can't do it without you. You know, everything we do is a numbers game, and it's important that we make sure that North Central Illinois is considered for the projects that are out there, that we make sure as a marketing organization that we do everything possible to make sure bureaus out in Platteville County stand out. So what are those numbers? The most important number to me is 154,000 people who live in our three counties, because everything we do to market this region, we've got to think about our people, got to think about our residents, got to think about our taxpayers, got to think about our families, got to think about the kids. You know, we've got to make sure that when they graduate, that they have an opportunity to get a good job and raise a family here and not have to go somewhere else. And that's hard. That's hard in a rural area. It's hard in rural America, but we know that we can compete because we've got great advantages. 15,000, it's another number. There are 15,000 economic development organizations competing with us. 15,000 in America. For how many projects per year? About 2,000. So about 2,000 projects annually that involve an expansion that creates at least 100 jobs. 15,000 competing for 2,000. So how do we make sure our three counties have an opportunity to compete for that? Well, we work at it. We coordinate together. We make sure that we're doing something that's never been done before. It's a new day. We compete. We want to be on the radar. We work and compete and market to the right people so they know the great assets that are here. 20,000. There are 20,000 unemployed people in our labor market. Now, our labor market includes more than three counties, parts of eight counties, actually. But if you talk to Steve Nelson or you talk to any major employer in the region, they employ from a pretty wide area. Sometimes people commute a good hour. We know that, right? But 20,000 people, 20,000 unemployed, and we need to get them jobs. We've got to worry about our three counties and the people that are here. Everything the North Central Illinois Economic Development Corporation does, we're a marketing organization. We're not competing with the chambers. We're not doing downtown events. We don't do grants. We don't do finance. We don't do workforce development. We do marketing, because nobody else was doing regional marketing. And you and the other leaders in the region realize that if we're going to compete, we've got to meet with the key people who know what's going on. So what are we doing? We're having meetings weekly with top brokers and consultants, especially in Chicago area. We've had almost 200 meetings, private meetings. We market specifically in 20 months, specifically with the siding of industrial office realtors, the top industrial brokers in the country. They have a major Chicago chapter. We work with the Association of Industrial Real Estate Brokers, Cornet Global Association of Real Estate Executives, and the Site Selecters Guild. We also work hand in hand with Intersect Illinois, which is the marketing agency for the state, and of course with DCO. The good thing is that we're making progress. I wish I could say we've got new announcements ready to go. We're getting the site tours every week. It's not happening yet. But we are getting leads, and we have to generate leads if we're going to even be in the game. So prior to NCI, we received six to eight inquiries a year from the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. They just, you know, they weren't marketing. They didn't have a marketing agency. But now they have a marketing agency, so Intersect and DCO are actually getting more inquiries. But we're getting more inquiries directly from our broker contacts. So what are we doing? We're getting six to eight a month. We're getting site visits. We're right now a finalist with one other state for a major project out of Ireland. Very exciting. Hopefully, we can have an announcement on that. Fingers crossed. But bottom line is, we're in the game. We're making sure that North Central Illinois and our advantages are well-known by marketing to the right people who are the decision makers or who represent the decision makers. And we couldn't do it without you. And it's a real pleasure. Mary, you're with us every step of the way, you know, and we really appreciate that. And Rachel, when we have any inquiries, you know, and we need information on sites and buildings, you know, you're one of the first ones to get information to us. So we really appreciate that. It's that allied relationship, it's that trust, it's that preparedness, it's that professionalism that makes all the difference in the world. We do have a video that we put together. It's on our website, which is directly aimed at site selectors and real estate professionals. But the video, we're very proud of it, and we are definitely utilizing it a lot in our promotions. Let's see if it works. See if we got the volume. We were having a little technical difficulty earlier, but I think we're okay now. Well, okay. Volume on the, um, up there? Do we have the volume? Okay, I've got volume up here. And we were having a little trouble with the flash drive.
Is there any tech people in the audience here?
Wait, wait.
It won't let us look on the full screen.
It's just a little bit on the right in that screen.
Try it again here. All right, the volume is right here. It's like it's up all the way. And...
It's doing some weird things there. It won't let us see over there. Do you just want to go YouTube again?
No, it'll be all right. Go back to data center. All right. I could act it out, maybe, that's what.
We'll try it one more time here. Nope, doesn't do it. It's doing something crazy.
It's doing something crazy. I tell you what. All you get on our website with northcentralillinois.org or get it on your phone, probably link to it pretty easily. But the main thing is, you and all the leaders in the three-county region want us to be focused on marketing the region for new jobs, new tax revenue, new capital investment. And that's all we do. That's all we're focused on. We don't want to compete with the other organizations that are doing great in business retention. They're doing great downtown development and events and workforce development. There are so many aspects of workforce development that are important, but marketing has to be done. If we have great assets, people still need to know about it. So we're very pleased with your support and very pleased with the progress that's being made. We know we've got a lot to do, and I think the boss has it here.
I think so.
You've got it. All right, I just need to get over here. All right.
Central Illinois is the growth and profit center of Illinois. Eagles thrive and businesses succeed.
Trans station is key to our operation. Half of our products is shipped via truck and half is shipped via the water on the Illinois River.
Four mainline railroads, Illinois River navigation, airport, interstate highways, nearby intermodal terminals, and access to the International Hub of Chicago make this region the number one logistics location in North America.
You can get onto an ocean vessel and go around the world. We ship our product to China, India, the Middle East, basically all over the globe. When you add all of those logistics advantages up, it makes it a very compelling decision to build a business here and be profitable.
You can count on a large and productive workforce skilled in manufacturing and technology.
I just want to posit it in this North Central area. Labor force is very diverse. We're able to pull from an hour radius from our operation.
Quality education with technical training. Community colleges and universities ensures a prepared and skilled workforce to meet business needs.
We have a workforce that is very hardworking and well-educated and loyal, and that kind of a thing is really a competitive advantage and a neutral and safe.
Very fortunate to have drug-free, hard-working people who share your vision and have shared our vision.
North Central Illinois is known for the companies we keep, for firms that grow, prosper, and compete globally. This region is a cool profit center in advanced manufacturing, industrial machinery, fabricated metals, food processing, energy, chemicals, plastics, glass, electronics, and distribution.
Location for us is important as far as often or state 839. A lot of our raw materials come from up north, so logistics is important as far as the cost of bill, cost of our product.
Full-service business parks and industrial sites in the region are here to meet the needs of expanding firms. The cities and counties in North Central Illinois provide a competitive business climate with low taxes and oppressive incentive policies. Businesses especially flourish in a dynamic region with a quality lifestyle.
This is a great place to have a business because of a numerous variety of things. It's not just logistics and the location. It's a very cool place to live.
It's all right here at the Interstate 8 Interstate 39 corridor southwest of Chicago. North Central Illinois, this is where business profits soar. Find out more on three four plans into profits.
Thank you. We're very pleased with the video in every aspect. I mean, we're doing advertising, we're doing promotions, site visits, personal visits, meeting with brokers and consultants. Bottom line, we couldn't do it without you, and at all times, if there's anything new or any of the leaders have any questions you have, any concerns, any comments we want to know about that. Again, we're only 20 months old, so it's still new, but we're finding out that, you know, that with a lot of support and with a lot of aggressive action and teamwork, we can achieve a lot and make sure that North Central Illinois is recognized as a great place to make profits and raise a family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ivan, and thank you for your leadership in this scenario. So the future looks bright and great video, by the way. Even if you'd like, you can... All right, our next item on the agenda, we want to recognize our volunteers. We've been doing this, we did this at our meeting two weeks ago. We're going to do it tonight, and we're going to do it again in two weeks, because we have a large number of volunteers that assist Princeton and everything that we do. We're recognizing about 60 some odd volunteers, and we appreciate everything you do. You don't get the recognition you deserve, and we want to, that's why we called everyone in to recognize you. So we are going to call you up, and we have a... Thank you, certificate for you, and we also have a little token of our appreciation. That's a token you'll actually be able to use. So what I'll do is I'll stand over here and I'll call you up, and then when you receive your certificate and your token, try to line up along the front here, and then we'll get a group picture afterwards, okay? We're going to do this by committee, so we're going to start with the Science Commission and Michael Webb. Rod McLand. We'll go to the Industrial Development Commission, Kevin Struck. And Mike Sniff. Chris Mear. We'll go to the Historic Preservation Commission, Melissa Steen. Ryan Peitzer. Steve Peitzer. Dan Martinez. And next would be Steve Esme, and we're also recognizing Steve, because he also sits on the Princeton Public Library Board of Trustees. The Princeton Public Library Board of Trustees, Jennifer Alter. Paul Gertz. Tony Bonucci. Sanjay English. Tim Corbin, both of the Buckeye Home Center Board of Trustees, Tim Corbin. Pam Wang. Sarah Hudson. Eric Cutser. The Pedestrian Bicycle Commission, Jean Kinsley. Might have to have three rows tonight. And that's Sable. Public Arts Commission, Chuck Major. Cindy Olson. Sally, is there any? Yeah, Olson. Hospital Ward, call reserving. Linda Gusterson. Citizens Electric Utility Advisory Committee, Mark Austin. So that is the group. We'll get the professionals here, and they all lined up for your photograph, and again, thank you for your service. We really appreciate it.
You guys can't see our faces. You probably can't see us if you're looking directly at the back of somebody's head shipped to the left or right. Probably we're going to need to come up at you a little bit so that we can bring the sides in a little tighter. If you can see over anybody's head, step to the back. If you're looking at shoulders, step to the front.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm picking on you. Can you switch with him?
Yes.
Did you see Melissa in the back?
Melissa, can you switch with Jack?
Chuck, can you move to the middle, maybe? That way we can have someone of a medium height step to the right. Can we have this side tighten up a little bit? I saw one in space directly in the back next to Jack. Actually, Mike, if you want to, I know that the brothers probably want to... If we can have few trade places there, I think, then I'll have everybody's face in my line of sight. Now, just don't move. You know, I'm going to be smart guy. All right. Ready? There we go.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, okay. You did. Any public comments? Okay, we'll go to approval of minutes from our regular meeting. We'll go to council member Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on March 19th, 2018.
Motion has been seconded. Any corrections? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. I'll go to council member Newman for the minutes from our special council. We'll do this again. I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes from our special council meeting, which was on the proposed budget, also on March 19th, 2018. Motion has been seconded. Any corrections? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. I'll go to approval of invoices of city clerk Nelson.
In the Department of Accounts and Finances, we have invoices totaling this period $23,545.64. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling $45,137.43. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $114,405.39. And finally, in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices, and now our submitted for disposition.
I move that we advance, or I'm sorry, I move that we approve the invoices as presented. Motion has been seconded. Any comments or corrections?
Just, Rachel, I forgot to email you today. You did not sign off on CrossFit, Anytime Fitness, or your own company, Matt.
I will be sure to sign off on this, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You have a comment, correction? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. I'll go to regular business and council or city clerk Nelson.
Next on the agenda is...
Next on the agenda is second and final reading of ordinance O-18-005, authorizing an option and structured lease agreement with New Singular Wireless LLC. Uh, Mayor, this has been reviewed by all council members and is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-18-005 for new wireless company.
Second.
Motion has been seconded, comments?
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is a second and final reading of ordinance O-18-006, authorizing an option lease agreement with Para Navigator LLC. This has been reviewed by all council members and is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-18-006, which is a lease agreement with Para Navigator. Motion has been seconded, comments or corrections? Comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Uh, next on the agenda is the first reading of the annual budget ordinance, ordinance number O-18-007. Uh, Mayor, this has been reviewed by all council members and is submitted for disposition.
I'd like to make a motion that we advance ordinance O-18-007 to the second reading. Motion has been seconded, Rachel, comments?
So, there, it's similar to what was, or it's the same pretty much as what was presented in our budget planning session, whatever that was, a week or two weeks ago, I guess. The only thing is I hadn't completed the police pension, fire pension numbers, and I just handed those out, but I'll make sure they're included in here before the second reading, and so I'll have those finalized. Um, are there any further questions on this that I can...
Rachel, if I could, I know that when we read the paper about, I know Spring Valley, for example, as well as other communities, and one of the challenges they have is the police and fire pensions. So, I know I've asked this before, so right now, we're funded, how much approximately? Are we looking good on this, or where are you at?
So, we're better than most, but we still, I don't want me on these percentages because they're not exact, but we're about eighty-seven percent, and eighty-five, I want to say. So, somewhere around there. However, one of the things that's going to be presented to both the police and fire pension boards this week at their meeting is to have an outside actuary that'll do that, sort of using state stipulations for that, to make... Spring Valley just did that. There was an article in the paper about that. So, a similar request to do that. But we are, we're not where we need to be, but better than most pensions in the area.
Okay, so if I could, if they don't mind, let's just do for the fun of it, the police pension that you gave us a sheet on just a few minutes ago.
Yeah. I'll just make a quick comment about it, because this is only the contributions and what we're paying out. It doesn't include any of their investments, because they manage that as a board themselves. So, this doesn't say, you know, this only shows, like, for instance, our police pension, the property tax revenue that we receive, and then the contributions from current employees, but it doesn't include any of their own investments that they have in CDs and other things. Just to make that clear, because they have a lot more money than what it shows here.
Okay. So, like, for example, on our portion of it that we're contributing, is that correctly saying it?
Yeah.
Okay.
The two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand for police, and then the... Oh, I have two. I was like, this is the same. And then the three-hundred, or three-hundred-two-hundred-seventy-five for fire.
Okay, so then, let's say for our contribution from last year versus this year, so our actual versus this year's approved, it jumps up pretty high.
So, contributions are the employees' contributions to their pensions.
Okay, so we go to expenditures. So, police pension expenditures, two thousand sixteen-seventeen actual, for example, is it four-thirty-seven?
What do you look at?
Police pension expenditures.
Sixteen-seventeen, yeah, four-thirty-seven, and this year, the requested amount is five-twenty-four. We've had three retirees that have been added to that.
That's why I didn't understand it. That's why that jumps up.
That's why, exactly.
Gotcha. Simple math, three additional retirees that we did not have last year.
Right. Well, yep, and sixteen-seventeen is actually two years ago.
Got it. Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, they're personal investments, we'll both the gap from revenue to expenditure.
Exactly.
Any further comment? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Now, we'll go to the city manager report.
Uh, did you want me to do that, Pete?
Uh, what's that?
The building?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Why don't you do it now?
Anyway, the, um, this is the monthly billing report, which turns out to be the quarterly billing report. Since this is the first one for eighteen, anyway, I've summarized all the billing permits from January first until present day. And we, uh, we have issued nine permits this year with a value totaling four-hundred-eighty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars, compared to last year at this time, which was five permits issued with a value of seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. And two years ago, four permits were issued with a value of thirty-two thousand, five-hundred dollars.
Anything else, Rachel? Okay, thanks, Pete. Uh, I only have one thing. Proclamation. Uh, April eleventh, two thousand and eighteen marks the fiftieth anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, as amended, which enunciated a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, national origin, sex, family status, and handicap, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. The city of Princeton, as well as Illinois, the Illini Valley Association of Realtors, are committed to highlight the Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure every American of their right to fair housing. Therefore, I, Joel Querom, Mayor of Princeton, hereby resolve that April two thousand and eighteen, being Fair Housing Month, began here law, commemoration of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, enters all citizens who wholeheartedly recognize this celebration throughout the year. That is all I have. Any old business?
If I could, Mayor, what's a nice presentation there from Ivan Baker. Refresh our memory, was that a three-year commitment? And how much year were we committing for that project?
It's a three-year, and it's ten thousand a year.
I think overall, that's a good investment. I think it's a roll of the dice, but I think it's better than not being invested in.
Well, it's, uh, it is, especially in this business climate in Illinois, and the challenges that are faced to have somebody like Ivan in the driver's seat on this, I think, will pay dividends. You know, we've just got to give it some time. Any other old business? Any new business? Any public comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and to reconvene in an executive session, and then to go to our next meeting after this.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn our regular meeting and then convene an executive session under Illinois statutes to discuss the selling of price-for-sale or lease of property. And then reconvene for our next regular meeting on Monday, April sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven o'clock here at City Hall. Motion has been seconded, call roll.
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Fabia.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned, and thank you for attending.